Good evening and welcome to the March 11th, 2019 Council Work Session. And we have a smaller group today. We have two councilors traveling to the National League of Cities and a third councillor, Claire Sarette, busy with work. And Alan Zelenka will show up as his commute allows. So we will start. And our first piece is Committee Reports and Items of Interest. I have a couple of things, but I'm wondering if councilors have. Okay, Emily, take it away.
Thank you very much. I don't have any committee reports due to snow and budget committee meetings. So their usual refrain, where's the downtown day center? Time keeps marching on. And at the very least, we need bathrooms downtown. It's getting warmer. There's more people down today. It's going to keep getting more crowded, which means more bodies. So please, I need some bathrooms downtown. And I had a couple other things, but I guess they'll wait till after break. Thanks.
Anybody else? You have something, Mike?
I thought I did, but...
Okay. All right. Well, if it occurs to you, you know, wave at me. So just a couple of things. First, I was gone, was it last week? The week before last? I've lost track of time. But I went on the United Front trip. This is the 35th year that the cities of Eugene, Springfield, Lane County, Lane Transit District, Willamette Lane, Parks and Rec, and Springfield Public Schools all go together annually to Washington DC, both to meet with our delegation, with Wyden, Merkley, and DeFazio, but also to meet with federal agencies. And many of our investments locally have been really facilitated by those trips and the contacts we make and the relationships formed with those agencies. So among the meetings that I participated in was Department of Transportation, where we talked about Franklin Boulevard. That's a joint investment, Springfield and Eugene, and their new, the federal grant has sort of changed in some of its form. So we got more information about that and some insight and then just sort of kept that conversation going. I also met with EPA, and it's their investment in our brownfields in the riverfront that has enabled us to do this development that we will be talking about, that the subject of this meeting today. So some of these are really ongoing relationships, very worthwhile and very interesting. And I was there while the snowstorm was happening. And I heard from a lot of people about the snowstorm while I was there. And, you know, I, so I want to say a couple of things. One is really deep appreciation for our Public Works Department for the extent to which everybody was all hands on deck and working as hard and fast as they could to really dig people out and get the city back up and running. It was really a monumental task. And I recognize that we have 168,000 citizens, and I heard from a dozen of them. So keeping in mind, most people were served and patient and understood what was going on. And so really appreciate that very, very good work of the team. And I had a very pointed takeaway from this, which is that many of the emails that I got, I felt people were really struggling because it was cold, it was scary, and it was very isolating. And so I think some of those thoughts around how people feel isolated in those situations, if we think, when we think about an earthquake event where we might have communication systems down. So it was another reminder to me about neighborhood, the CERT training in neighborhoods and how we look out for people in neighborhoods, and particularly thinking about people who are living in apartments that are all electric. And if the electricity is not running, how do we take care of them? They're not going to necessarily be stocked up with food. And so with that in mind, I want just one more promo for Prepare Out Loud, which is April 4th, starting at 5:00 and going until 7:30. The first part will be, it'll be a South Eugene High School. It'll be a kind of an agency fair where people can get lots of information, go to a lot of booths and learn how to prepare. And then there'll be a presentation. So a great opportunity for the community to really think, having just come through the snowstorm, what it felt like in their house, where they were prepared and not prepared, that you can actually take all that immediate sense of urgency and go to Prepare Out Loud and upgrade your system. And then one final comment really for the public, which is that a reminder that if you have trees and limbs down on your property, it is actually your responsibility to take care of that. And the city is not going to swing by and take care of things that are, you know, at the edge of your driveway, or they're yours. And so you'll have to make your plans for that, however. But the city has its hands full with their own public properties. So that's my pitch. And did something occur to you in that time? Okay.
Well, other than to say, I concur and agree that our Public Works Department did a monumental job under the circumstances of what we faced, all in a big hurry. I think that the, in the place we live, we take trees and their existence in our city more seriously than many cities do. And we like them. And we think it's a good thing, which makes maintaining power in a storm situation that much more difficult. And I don't know the appropriate way to have that discussion, because so much of that is E-Web's bailiwick. But I think that the more we can do to assist them with the more lines they would like to bury underground as opposed to up in the air would be wise for the sake of resiliency and people keeping power in a storm event. So I don't know the part we play in that conversation in detail. But I really would like to see us do that if we can. I think that would be wise. And it would be helpful to an awful lot of people to maintain power in a situation like that.
Okay. Thank you. And so now I'm actually adjourning the meeting of the Eugene City Council and opening the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency for a conversation about the riverfront.
Can you start whenever you're ready?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. My name is Michael Kennison. I'm with the Community Development Division. And I'm here with Emily Proudfoot with our Parks Division and Mauricio Potolico with our Finance Division. And we're here to talk to you about the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. Specifically, we're going to provide you with a brief overview of the district, some of the prior investments that we've made, what current investments that we've committed to with urban renewal funds. Then Emily's going to talk at length about the park and the park design process, where we're at there, what the park budget is and funding needs. And Mauricio is going to talk about the financial capacity of the district. And then we'll kind of clarify next steps and leave it open then for questions and discussion. I would like to clarify that we're not asking you to do anything today, to take action on anything today. We're just here to provide information and answer any questions that you have. I also wanted to mention that in the AIS, you may have noticed that we had information in there on future potential investments in the district beyond the park. But to preserve time for today's discussion of the park and its needs, we're going to postpone any conversation really about that or presentation about that. And we'll be coming back to you at a later date to be able to do that. The Riverfront Urban Renewal District is 246 acres. It was established in 1985. It stretches from I-5 in the east, along the Willamette River, all the way to the Ferry Street Bridge, south, all the way over to Pearl Street into downtown, and then makes its way back to I-5 along Franklin Boulevard. It was amended in 2000, or the plan was amended in 2004. We added some acreage, expanded a list of project activities, and established a spending limit and a sunset date of 2024. And I'd also like to point out that the brown area here marks the boundary of the downtown riverfront development. And the hatching here in the green is the boundary of the park. So those areas are entirely within the district.
This is the headquarters.
The goals of the district include improving connections between the downtown core and the river, and to stimulate development and amenities in the area in which the federal courthouse is currently located, where that star is, and what we now refer to as the courthouse district. You may recall that it hasn't always looked the way that it looks today. At one time, it was the center of agricultural packaging and canary there with Chiquita and AgriPac businesses. And in the early 2000s, we purchased property there using urban renewal funds and cleared the property and helped get it ready for redevelopment, eventually selling it to the federal government for construction of an $80 million federal courthouse, and to Northwest Community Credit Union for construction of their $20 million headquarters building there. In terms of current commitments with district funds, as part of the downtown riverfront development, we have committed to spending $3.7 million for the three easternmost crossings that are displayed there in orange. And those are at Pearl High and Hilliard. And all 10 of the crossings are scheduled to begin construction in 2020. We also have committed to invest $5.2 million in bringing the riverfront development project to fruition, to help cover a share of community costs of public infrastructure as part of that project. And redevelopment of the riverfront provides a critical opportunity to complete the vision of connecting our downtown to the river, something we have long awaited in our community. The Riverfront Park is a key component of implementing this vision, almost the last piece, if you will, to get to the river. Emily is going to talk with you now about how this exciting project is shaping up and what it will take to bring it to fruition.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Here we go. So as you may know, over the last year, we've been working with our consultant team from Walker Macy Landscape Architects out of Portland. And they brought with a pretty big team. And I'm starting off with this tonight because I've talked to you quite a bit about the public outreach that we've done so far, which was kind of a hallmark of that first phase. But we also in this first phase did an enormous amount of data gathering. So we had consultants who were public artists and environmental toxicologists and people who specialize in river fluvial geomorphology and architecture, site and cultural history, and much more. And so here's just a quick slide of what our geotechnical work looked like, which was that we poked some holes in the site, looked at a lot of different kinds of dirt and profiling. And we did this in a lot of ways and have big reports on a whole bunch of different aspects of the project like this. So that's all to say that, you know, we have a pretty complicated site and a pretty big vision for it. So this is, so the community really told us and verified again, that was what they told us in the master plan almost 10 years ago, which is that they really want a cultural landscape that's uniquely Eugene and a place that will teach and inspire. And so that's really about, you know, that people want an urban riverfront park where they can come and see the river and then learn about our community and its environmental history within that context. So I like this slide because it shows how much green space we have near the center of our city. And there's the downtown riverfront park right in the middle, across the river from Alton Baker Park, which is about a 400-acre park that's mostly natural area. So it's about a third of a mile along the river. There is, the original park site was three acres, basically from the new bike path location forward to the river. Through the work that we did on redefining the site plan for the downtown riverfront redevelopment site, we added one acre of a downtown riverfront plaza. And you can see that here. It's this part, it's right here. And so immediately adjacent to the park, you know, we have some very, there's some commercial mixed use. So there's a steam plant on the south end, a restaurant proposed for the north end, E-Web headquarters, and then residential and hotels surrounding it. These bookends of mixed use and commercial space are really what is going to make this park sing. And I think those two land use types really complement each other and are important. And I'll talk about that more in a little bit. So what we heard from the community is that people really want an inclusive and flexible set of open spaces along the river. They want it sustainable. They want us thinking about how we use water and storm water and thinking about the environment. There's a cultural and environmental interpretive piece here that they're really interested in. They want a balanced approach between urban and natural. So they don't, you know, when we talk about an urban riverfront park, it could be just all pavement and a few trees and some glass buildings. And that's not what people are looking for. Nor, on the other hand, are they looking for a really, really natural and very green park along the river, because we have a lot of that already. So they're looking for a balance. And then I think one of the most important things that we heard is they want it to be safe. So this is our existing condition, and I don't think that it actually meets any of the things I just talked about. I think many of you are familiar with the cattle shoot of chain link fencing along a very, the top of a pretty steep riverbank on the outside bend of the river that has a lot of riprap and non-natives invasives on it. And there's trees there, too, and we're working to preserve a lot of them. But predominantly, this is the feeling you have when you cross this site now. And so where we're headed with this park design concept is really a layered landscape, where we move from a more urban treatment, where's my red arrow there, where we have a more urban experience here and a multimodal path that we reconstruct. And then it gets softer as we move out toward the river. But very importantly, we're maintaining and creating these view corridors that were so important in the development of the master plan. And so here's the current plan that we are working with. And I've been over this a few times, so I won't belabor it. But I will, so here's the park plaza that we're talking about, and then the riverfront park, which extends from the steam plant to north of the north headquarters. Basic highlights include overlooks, the multimodal path development, independent pedestrian paths that reach out over the river to these viewpoints, and then a pretty big plaza here that I'll talk about a little bit more. And then much improved access to the top of the Peter DeFazio Bridge. We'll be saving the E-Web plaza for now. And so this is just a quick concept of what that starts to look like, where we're creating those viewpoints among, you know, stormwater treatment planters. If this image were complete, the steam plant would be in the upper right corner there. But really starting to open those views and create an environment where people have access to the river visually and can spend time there and enjoy it. And so what we're talking about now, and I think I've mentioned this in previous sessions, is that we've broken the project into two phases. So the initial phase of work that we'll be completing for 2021 is the riverfront, is approximately three-acre riverfront park piece. And then as the phase two after 2021, we'll be looking at the plaza development piece. And we elected to do that because we didn't, you know, at the time, we were moving forward, we weren't sure yet what the buildings would be like and when they might be constructed around this. And so we wanted to get more information before we, more programming information before we decided to fully move forward with the design. So there's a park plan in, from a drone view, that you wouldn't see unless you were a tiny person in a drone. And here's some of that circulation that I was talking about. So the big thick line is the multimodal path. It's split between pedestrians and bikes. And then the small dash lines are the more pedestrian oriented pathways. This is a cross section of that multimodal path. And we heard a lot about people wanting to separate the bike and the pedestrian uses, really for safety of users on the site. And these are some of the different kinds of landscapes that you'll see on the site. We have lawn, we have terraces, there's places to view the river from, and just a variety of landscapes that are more manicured to less. I always like this section because you can see where we're taking back the existing grade, which is this red line right here. And we're going to lay the bank back roughly between this, the electrical tower here and Fifth Avenue. So we'll lay the bank back probably about a 10 foot of elevation that we will bring back here. So we'll be cutting this off and then creating new viewing platforms and other amenities within that laid-back bank, which ideally then enables you to see the river from further away as opposed to just having to come all the way to the tippity top of the bank to see it. And so here's another great image looking north from the steam plant of the overlooks, the multimodal path, and that sort of independent pedestrian path that starts to reach out over the river. We are heavily incorporating public art and interpretation. And this is the place where the cultural landscape, the vision for the cultural landscape really hits the ground. So this is a proposed art pavilion at the end of Fifth Avenue. And we really see it as a way to draw people out to the river. So if you're walking down Fifth from downtown, you'll see this sculpture. And we see it as a place for performing art, where we could perhaps have projection or, let's see here. So here's a, here's a tiny, a smaller image of a movie being played on a screen there. And it lights up at different colors at night. This is a view looking back into the development, so from the river. So it really brings you through to this lower platform. And then when you look back, these are just massings of buildings. This is not what they would really look like, fortunately. But it will, you can see back into the development this way. So I think this does a really nice job of illustrating how it brings you out and over the river and looking back into the development. So then from an interpretation standpoint, we have developed a thematic plan around that. We have some goals around it, and that the interpretive pieces are welcoming, that they're low maintenance, and that they're experienced rather than read. So really, they're integral to the landscape design. They're not a series of 24 by 36 inch signs on, or placards on posts. So the first interpretive element is energy. And these are all pretty high concepts right now, but we're working on them. And the inspiration for this, for this piece is around steam and the opportunities with steam, where you can color it and make shadow, and around turbines. And that this was a location where, you know, the turbines within E-Web created steam to heat our downtown. And so the idea here is that potentially this piece is inlaid into the overlook just north of the steam plant. And that it's a circle, and it, part of the circle that extends out over the platform actually has steam and light that come out. And then the inside portion is inlaid into the pavement there and has some sort of interpretive language around how steam may have heated downtown, or, you know, other, maybe an inspirational quote or something about steam. The second interpretive element is about ecology. And we're interpreting this on the pedestrian paths that reach out away from the multimodal path and toward the river. So the inspiration for this piece is, or these pieces are that, you know, over time, we've done a pretty darn good job of taking a wild and meandering river and squishing it into one area, much to many of our benefit. So, but that it had a much more meandering character. And so the idea here is, and I think I showed this slide last time for those of you who are here, is that, that these meandering riverways could be interpreted in the pavement of these pedestrian paths and then come up into a backbench panel, which then would potentially talk about plants or the ecology of the river, or the history of the river, or something like that, several locations along this path. The third interpretive element is community. And this location is particularly important on this one. So we're proposing that it be located at the bottom of the access path that would go up and over the Peter DeFazio Bridge. And the story that we're interpreting here is, is the story about the African-American community that used to live across the bridge, called the Across the Bridge Community. And that community was displaced when the Ferry Street Bridge was constructed. But at that time, African-Americans were not allowed to live within the city limits. And so whites lived here as well. And this is a photograph of some children in the Ferry Street Bridge community at that time. And it was a very vibrant community. There are many wonderful things that have happened, that happened there. And I think it was very difficult for the African-American community when it was, when it was moved and dispersed. And so the idea for this piece is that, that it's a drinking fountain that's accessible by, and inclusive, accessible and inclusive for everyone, and provides water at all these different levels. And then, and then the photograph of the children by the water pump is here, and it's in glass. And so you can see it from both sides as you come down the bike path. And that story is told in that window. And we've had focus groups look at each of these elements. And in particular with this one, we met with several members of the African-American community here in Eugene. And they were very, they were very excited about this project. They were very enthused about it. And I think there's some great opportunities then to take this story across the river. And as we start to look at the master plan for Alton Baker Park, talk about an opportunity there where we might be able to talk about the Across the Bridge Community further. The last interpretive element would be on the plaza site. And this one is industry. And it's really an opportunity to talk about the mill race. We've heard over and over how people are excited about the mill race, how they would love to open it, but it's not really feasible here. There's a pipe that runs with the mill race under it, 20 feet underground. But, you know, historically, it was both a resource of industry and recreation in our community. I left this ice skating picture. And so the idea here is that we would incorporate some sort of children's play, or that involved water, and then could interpret the mill race, you know, that was right underneath the plaza. So I think it has some lovely opportunities to really create fun and family and learning in the same breath. So that's a quick presentation of where we are on the design for now. And then we'll talk a little bit about current funding and costs. So right now, the project budget is about $14 million, and it's broken out, as you see above. And we have, we have current funding right now from park capital funds, stormwater capital funds, and transportation capital funds for the project. And so we're looking at about a $5 million gap there. But if we look in at construction costs, I think, you know, these sites are very difficult. And we've seen that across other sites. So my preamble about the complexity of the site, including, you know, the crisscross of utilities there, that it's a brownfield site, that riverfront sites are typically pretty challenging to work within, and they're very technical, especially from a permitting perspective. I think you'll see that these other waterfront park costs are somewhat comparable to what we're looking at. And ours is actually a little bit less. So it feels like it's somewhat right size for our community. So then from a timeline standpoint, we're looking at developing the riverfront park over two construction seasons. So this coming summer, we'll be working on riparian enhancement and utility relocation. So we'll lay back the bank between Fifth Avenue and the tower. We'll be doing some, a lot of riparian planting in the areas where we don't lay it back. And then, and then fundamental utility location, as we, there's a big band of electric and fiber running along the top of the bank there that we'll have to get out of the way to lay the bank back. Then in 2020, you'll see full construction of the park happen. And ideally, it'll be well established in time for 2021. So, and much of this work is happening in conjunction with the infrastructure work happening on the development side of the site. So we're trying to make efficient uses of resources there. Last but not least, here's the plaza. And, you know, the activities in the plaza, I think, are pretty key to what we heard from the public. They really want a family-friendly area. This is the urban This is the urban portion of the riverfront park. It's also really important for our, our Williams and Dame partnership as the, as the activities in the buildings that they're putting next to the park, like the restaurant and the hotel, are, those are very much symbiotic relationships, right? So that you're programming the plaza, and the restaurant is there to help provide beverage or food, or, you know, any of those kinds of activation pieces. They're pretty, they're pretty important together. We're talking about $4 million in initial reserve for this project, and that includes the estimated LID cost. So the LID cost for the park site would be about $1.4 million as it's currently calculated. And that gets all of our, that, you know, that pays for the park properties portion of the infrastructure and utilities needed to serve the site. So it's, every, every site on the development does pay into the LID. So, you know, we don't, while we do have a design for this that we did as part of the concept planning, I think, you know, we will be revisiting that and making sure that we're meeting the programmatic needs that we have for that site. We're just, they're kind of in flux right now, and we're probably doing that a little bit further down the road. But this is, this captures the spirit of the, a kind of place that I think that we want downtown on our riverfront. We want it to be playful. We want people to come for events, or food carts, or markets. You know, we want it to be, you know, fully accessible and really fun for everyone, and a place that people bring their families when they come here, or people, when they come to Eugene, they go to the riverfront, they find the river, because that's a hallmark of our downtown. So. And from now, I'll turn it over to Mauricio for financial information.
All right. Thanks, Emily. So I'll be providing an overview of the financial capacity of the Riverfront District. So as you can see on the top half of this slide, it is estimated the district may have approximately $18.1 million in total financial capacity to fund new expenditures through fiscal year '24 when the district is expected to sunset. It is important to note the district does not currently have this amount on hand. Rather, this is an estimate of existing district resources plus projected revenue through fiscal year '24. So the district has two types of revenue as shown here. Let's start with tax increment revenue, which comes from property taxes. For reference purposes, the district is expected to collect $2.3 million of tax increment revenue in the current fiscal year, and this amount is projected to grow to $3.1 million annually in fiscal year '24. This projected revenue increase assumes growth in the overall taxable value of the district, including newly taxable land and improvements resulting from the downtown redevelopment through FY '24. The uncommitted tax increment amount of $10.3 million that's shown on the slide is an estimate of how much tax increment revenue may be available through FY '24 for new expenditures after all committed expenses are funded. These committed expenses include operating expenses through fiscal year '24, and as Michael mentioned, the three eastern railroad quiet zone crossings, and $5.2 million for downtown riverfront infrastructure costs and other DDA expenses. The other revenue type in the district is program revenue, which are dollars from non-property tax resources, such as land sales and rental income. The $7.8 million figure you see here is after setting aside $1 million for loans in the district. This amount includes $3.2 million from a recent land sale to the University of Oregon, and also future land payments from Williams and Dame of $2.2 million expected to be received by fiscal year '24. So moving on to the bottom half of the slide, if $5 million of district resources are allocated for the park and $4 million for the plaza, that would leave around $9.1 million available for other projects through fiscal year '24. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Michael to review next steps.
So we have a River Guides meeting scheduled for March 21st, and the River Guides is our advisory body for the district. And we'll be making a staff recommendation on meeting the park and plaza funding needs as, as presented today. And then we'll be back here for a work session on April 8th with the River Guides recommendation and a, and a specific budget request for you to take action on at that time. And with that, we'll leave it open for discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. I'm thinking about the frozen mill race. Like, if we keep having winters like this, we might be ice skating on the mill race again. I don't know. So I have, I have Mike in the queue. Anybody else needing a, and Chris? Okay, take it away, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, guys. I really appreciate that. And Emily, I agree entirely that our downtown riverfront is the hallmark of our downtown. I couldn't agree more. You mentioned there's three and a half acres in the entirety of that park, right? More or less?
It's three to three and a half. So the existing riverfront park parcel that we, that we just purchased is 3.1 acres, and then there's a mix of property ownership between the E-Web North headquarters building and the De Fazio Bridge. So, but we manage that right now as Skinnerview Park, part of Skinnerview Park.
Remind me when the sale of that property was completed?
Last December.
So of '18, right? $14 million for the budget, $9 million looks like urban renewal. Is any of the bond money from the park's bond being spent in any portion or part of doing?
There's a little bit of bond measure, like half a million that we're thinking of so far. Yeah. For the riverfront park right now. And that was in the park capital funds I was talking about.
Half a million. Okay. When did you start the planning process?
Well, maybe 10 years ago, or, this particular process, we probably started, we probably started it 18 months ago. Yeah.
Okay. The reason this is important is because we're going to talk about a park a little bit later during the capital improvement program part, and I just want to have some data for comparison's sake to one of the things that we're going to talk about. What percentage of the 14 is authorized already to do, to spend?
I'm not certain. It's all, most of it is in the CIP, and we have a little bit of funding right now in our budget to, to work on the project, right? So we probably have, I think we have $6 million in, you know, in the project right now just to work on it. And some of that will be expended for.
How much is in the CIP? Is it all 14 million?
No, only nine.
Nine's in the CIP.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, actually, let me correct that. So it is, right now, it's 5.5, and we had 3.5 that was previously appropriated. So, if that helps.
Yeah, all right.
It's eight to nine. It's just not all of it shows up in the, in the CIP that you'll be reviewing tonight.
And you estimate completion of the project in its entirety in November of this year?
No.
Did that one slide say?
Yeah, so we're looking at the downtown riverfront park piece, so that first three, three and a half acres.
Right.
That'll be done by the fall of 2020 or spring of 2021. So the idea is that it's open and ready for the games in 2021. The plaza will be probably starting in 2021 or 2022.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job with that, and I'm excited about it.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you. Great presentation, really, really very thorough. And what I particularly like is, as we move along, it's great to check in with us so that we're aware of what's happening as this goes, particularly in light of any funding gaps or anticipated needs, because if you can say, here's where we are, here's what we want to do, here's the money we have so far, here's some of the ideas we have, it, very important to feel like we've got options and time to think about it, rather than say, well, we've gotten down the road, we've run up against a roadblock, we're in a corner, and we got to act fast. This is the opposite of that, and I really, I really like that. So I think this is perfect to bring it at this time, so we can get a sense of what it is you want to do and where you think the potential gaps might be, so that we can be very thoughtful about what we'll do to fill it. And at this stage of the game, there's a number of ways we can fill it, and I think that's really giving us the opportunity to be creative. Some of the options you're even just chatting about sound like really good ones, and we just need to work through where we're going to go. I also want to say that the plans you've got to this point, and I realize they're rough, there's, you know, it's just renderings at this point, but the way of thinking, where your mind is going, I think is really good. And I think it will be very compatible with Williams and Dame's development that's going to go there. And for me, that's a very important point. You don't want the park to be incompatible with the commercial and residential development and vice versa. And this looks like you're going to be in constant conversation, so this will come together in a way where it will flow very well. And so I couldn't, I, I just can't tell you how happy I am. And these renderings will evolve as time goes along. I can think of things I would do with them, but that's part of the fun of creating these projects. So, thank you. Great presentation.
Jennifer?
Thank you. Thank you. It was a great presentation. It was very thorough. I wanted to first just thank you for the history piece that you guys have. I think it's very thoughtful. I think it's an excellent example of a community that most people in our town don't know ever existed, or what happened, or, you know, any of the history of it. I think it's an excellent option to include in this project, so thank you for considering that. I also do love the mill race frozen. That is a great picture. My question was, so this is one of six new park projects that we very luckily have planned in the future for our cities. So my question is, should we expect this level of quality for our other five parks?
Oh. Well, I think, I think.
Effort. Yes.
Well, yes, you should. You should. I think, you know, the downtown riverfront is a metropolitan park. And so I, you know, when, if you're thinking about a neighborhood park, do you want 1,000 people to come there every day? Well, maybe not, you know? But we are, you know, I think we're really committed to hearing what communities say. I mean, so much of what's in this plan is about what we heard from the community. We, you know, when we build stuff, we build it to a very high quality and to a quality that we can maintain. So it may not be shiny and polished, but it's to a quality we can maintain over time. I think that's really important. And then, you know, to the degree that we, you know, there are, I know the project you're talking about, Jennifer.
No, I mean, we have five other projects, not just Striker Field.
Right. And so there are five other projects, and all of those projects will, you know, we think really carefully about where we're building it and how we're building it and the budget that we have. And, and, and those are the, and that they're, you know, and then things like safety and maintainability are always at the top of our list. So we, you know, we work really hard to provide a very high level of, you know, park experience for anyone, depending upon what type of park it is. And, and we're, we're really committed to that because we know how important parks are to, to the, to the community. They're a huge reason why people live here, and we get 9 million park visits a year. So if, you know, if that's happening and people are enjoying our parks this much every day in our community, we're, you know, our mission is to deliver.
I'm glad to hear that. I had a question on about the one-acre plaza. You say here 4 million initial reserve, so what is your, I mean, does that mean you're going to want more than 4 million?
I think this is definitely, I think it will take more than 4 million to build it. I will be honest about that, especially with, I think the component of the permitting costs here is a pretty, it's a significant component of the park cost, which is the, the LID component that we are paying into. So that's 1.4 million that we're paying into development of the streets and utilities and to bring services to the site. The three-acre riverfront park is not paying any LID, you know, portions. So, so that's a pretty big component of it, and it, you know, and then I think if we're thinking about what people have really asked us for in their downtown riverfront park and sort of working together with Williams and Dame, I think it's going to take more than 4 million. We don't know what it is yet because we need to, you know, be thinking about our, you know, what are we programming for, what are we designing for, and we're not sure of that yet. We have an idea of how we want it to look and feel, but we're, we're not certain yet.
Well, I, I would assume that if anyone was asked, what do you want in your park, they could easily spend 4 million in any park.
Oh, of course.
Throughout our city. So, I mean, we don't necessarily spend money for the, you know, the Cadillac version of everyone's park.
No. And I don't think that's what we're looking for, you know? But I do think if you need urban plaza space for, you know, carts and programming and play and all those kinds of things, I mean, pavement is actually one of the most expensive things that we do, and we need it to be fully accessible. And I think just some of those basic costs to get it to a, a basic level of functionality, we might be able to do it for 4 million, but I don't know. And it's a few years down the road. I don't know what the economy looks like. I don't know what, you know, I'm just not sure. And we, I don't know quite what we're building yet. So I think, you know, we're not building a Cadillac riverfront park either. I think that's my personal or professional opinion. I think we're, we're doing a nice balance of, of pavement and natural areas and really listening to people about the quality, the quality that they want for it. I think that the plaza piece is the more urban piece, and so we're going to be seeing a little bit more pavement or a little bit more area for that kind of activation that we really need for that site to be successful.
Yeah. So the other park that's probably the closest to this would be the West Bank Park, which is also on a river, just up north. Is it, I mean, it's kind of a similar, yes or no, it's not in my area, but I would assume it's kind of a similar challenges and?
It has some similar challenges, but I don't think we have the programming expectations for it that we would at this site, right? So to me, West Bank Park is likely going to be developed more as, you know, probably more a neighborhood park amenity on the river, because we don't, you know, that's a great opportunity because we have some extra land that's close by that serves the neighborhood. And so I think we're seeing that site as an opportunity to provide neighborhood park amenities in a currently unserved area.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Emily?
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, for getting my questions started. The initial reserve, the money we already have, where did that come from?
Are you talking about for the riverfront park, the 9 million?
No, the plaza.
We, so we don't have that reserved yet.
So it says initial reserve.
That's the proposal.
We think we need that much money?
Yeah. And that's, again, that's what we were, I was just talking about with Jennifer, is that, you know, that would be the starting amount that we think we need.
I get that part. I just, in my life, when I have something reserved, I already have it. So I thought we had that 4 million. Oh, darn. I do like the design. I, I met with you last week, and that was really helpful. I especially like how much outreach was successful and you were able to include those designs. I went to a couple of the sessions and watched them change in response. So congratulations and thank you. I like the river views, and I really like the subjects for the interpretive panels. I like that there's more than one and that they're in sections. I, I think that's a cool thing. And, and once again, I'm going to advocate for a dog park. Thank you.
Okay.
A dog park. Dog park. They're going to be running loose anyway, all those people down there with dogs. Let's give them a space. Thanks.
Alan?
Yeah. I'll add on to the great presentation and great design. I like all of what you're doing, especially the, the quality level and the, and the interpretive parts of it are really cool. And to answer your question, I do not want 1,000 people a day in any one of my neighborhood parks. That would be crazy. This is a different scale of park with a different kind of programming than any other park that we have even close. Give me an example of visits per day to other kinds of parks.
I don't know. I don't think we've ever done anything like this before. I mean, I think this is, this is, you know, from a, from a programmatic and, and a technical standpoint, this is definitely the biggest project parks has ever taken on. I mean, well, Amazon was sort of big, but I feel like the ski park was a little bit, like had this level of technicality and, and a bigger budget, but not the kind of budget, not this kind of riverfront budget.
Yeah. So the, the riverfront park, everything but the plaza, that's the $14 million, and then the plaza, we just talked about the funding. What's the, so what's the timeframe for that? It's really integrated with, with Williams and Dame and how they're doing it.
Right, right. So they, so I think the DDA currently says that the buildings around it are, have to start construction by 2022. So that doesn't prevent them from starting earlier, it doesn't, you know, but that's kind of, it gives you a, sort of the out timeframe. So I think, and the DDA, I think also, there's an agreement in there that the plaza is there by the time the buildings are completed. So this is a very, you know, symbiotic thing. So that, so to me, the timeframe is that we're probably constructing in 2021 or shortly thereafter, or in 2022 or something like that. It's a little fuzzy, but it, but we're not including it with this first phase because we want to do some more programming work around it.
Yeah, right. Building it beforehand and having bulldozers go on around all...
Right. And I think also...
...a lot of very good appeal.
Yeah. And we really want, we want eyes on the park, right? We want immediate neighbors with people there and activities happening there and people going to eat their ice cream or get a coffee or get a beer and, you know, and that it really helps activate the space so that the Plaza isn't operating in isolation.
Right.
I think it's, it's pretty, that's pretty important.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty integrated into the, into the redevelopment site.
It'd be a cool destination.
Yes.
The river.
Yes. The steam plant will help. The steam plant, I think, will help. I think it will be the, you know, it'll be the only building on the site when we open the Riverfront. But I think, you know, having those two ends will be wonderful.
Also, on, not related to the park, but in the AIS, there was a, maybe somebody already asked this, but, river loans, a million dollars? What is that?
So, we have, in the Downtown Urban Renewal District, we have a loan program, and so, we have a provision for doing, having, have a similar program in the Urban Renewal District on the Riverfront. So, we're proposing to hold aside a portion of the financial capacity in the district to be able to do that ongoing.
Oh, okay. So, that's the loan pool. It's the same as the, we have Downtown, but we just call it River Loans instead.
Exactly.
Because we're clever. I get it. Okay. That makes sense to me. That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else needed in the round? All right. Well, thank you very much. Very, very exciting project. We're looking forward to the next, next iteration. So, thank you so much.
See you again soon.
Oh, and I guess that means I'm, I will close the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and reopen the City Council meeting, Council Work Session. And so, next up, single-use plastic items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Michael Wist, Waste Prevention Program Manager. Thank you for having me back to discuss single-use plastics again. Joining me tonight is Ethan Nelson. He's the city's Intergovernmental Relations Manager, who will provide some legislative updates related to some of our recommendations at the end of this presentation. So, a quick recap of our last meeting. We discussed single-use plastics, you know, and what they are, which is simply a plastic with a one-time use, typically non-recyclable, long-lived in the environment and landfill, and prevalent basically everywhere we go. I passed around, as Chris alluded to, various containers and material types to talk about, you know, what we experience, potential plastic alternatives and some of the difficulties they, they bring with them. We also discussed how a lot of this can be viewed as a litter control, an attempt to control litter, as many of these single-use products, when they end up in the environment, pose the same types of issues that plastics do. We also discussed what other municipalities have done to address these issues and pending state bills at the time. Today, we'd like to discuss some of the advantages and disadvantages of the alternative materials that are used in single-use items, as was requested last time, and also discuss health considerations for restaurants and retail food patrons, and also provide a legislative update paired with our staff recommendations. So, often when we talk about materials, we tend to place most of our environmental concerns related to attributes. DEQ has taken this up and discussed what attributes mean. We, we tend to listen for things that are compostable or recyclable or biodegradable and try to make an eco-conscious choice based on that. But that doesn't speak to the whole, the impact of the lives, impacts of the lifecycle of the product from its production through its disposal. So, what our partners at DEQ have done is a, they did a literature review where they reviewed dozens and dozens, dozens of lifecycle analysis studies that compared different types of packaging and food service ware items, both from biosourced, plastic, compostable. And they wrapped that up just later in 2018, are now sharing their results. Throughout this study, cups were the most commonly studied product, but includes several different studies that also talked about utensils and service ware and some carryout-style So, today, we'll be focusing on the service, uh, service ware part of the study. And I'll talk through this. So, we're, in this, this slide right here is looking at the bio-based versus non-bio-based alternatives. Bio-based is packaging made of renewable feedstocks that can be replenished as they are used. You know, these are most often plant-based, although some are plastic, but mostly paper and board. It does not imply biodegradability or compostability. It's simply where they're from, their source. Non-bio-based is the opposite. Non-renewable resources were used in its production and typically petroleum-based. So, if you look to the chart on the right, green means good, red means bad. These methods highlight trends across the various studies that were compared in this review. So, trends that tend towards the better will show up in the green, poorer, and red. The diamond indicates the net result of the review. So, when we look at a bio-based versus non-bio-based food service ware item, there's typically a gain towards the positive, and this is just trends, in general, there's a gain in the positive towards global warming impacts. But as you begin to go down, tick down the line, you'll notice that it become increasingly worse for the environment, acidification, ozone depletion, ecotoxicity, human toxicity. Most of that can be attributed to the production of these materials, when you think of pulp and paper mills and the agricultural need for a lot of these items. So, when you look at a lifecycle analysis, it creates a fuller picture of the impacts of all these different materials. So, similarly, when we look at a compostable versus non-compostable, so it'd be a compostable item that has been composted, composted versus a non-compostable item. By compostable, it means it degrades like a natural item would, yield CO2, water, inorganic compounds at a similar rate to a naturally-produced item. If we look at the information that DEQ has provided, we find that compostable materials trend significantly more towards poor performance on a lifecycle analysis than non-compostable And I think the, this next slide is probably the most counterintuitive, but this is something that DEQ's been saying for a while, that if we look at an item that's compostable and been composted versus an item that's compostable but hasn't been composted, the composted item is much worse than the compostable item that was not composted, meaning that compostable items generally perform better when they're landfill, incinerated, or recycled. So, what does that mean? When we look at it from a material perspective and a lifecycle analysis, there's no one material that significantly outweighs plastic as a replacement. You know, all food service ware materials, single-use food service ware materials present So, this leads us to multi-use service ware, which we had talked at length about in our last meeting. This would be like durables, which are used inside for dine-in purposes, or reusables, where a customer might bring in a, their own carryout container. I reached out to Lane County Environmental Health to understand what, first of all, what some of the liabilities might be to restaurant and retail food service owners, but also some of the health implications for people bringing potentially dirty or infected or contaminated reusable items for their own personal use. And as it turns out, because of sophisticated research methods, when outbreaks do happen, there's actually limited liability for a restaurant. It'd be pretty easy to figure out where a person got sick, if it was their own container or if it was something that was born from the kitchen or something like that. But there's considerations that would, it definitely requires a contamination-free process that would be permitted inside of the food retailer. And, and these become difficult to scale across all our different types of restaurants, from large dine-in or cafeteria-style places down to food carts, which would all be affected by a ban on, on single-use items. They have to institute barriers to prevent backsplash if they take someone's contaminated container over the counter. They can only rinse. They can't do any kind of washing for a customer that would commingle it with their own. They have to have more hand cleaning stations. And the, the best option they could provide me was that they could, a staff could serve food in a reusable, and the customer would have to transfer it to their own carryout. And I, in a very informal, non-scientific survey, I did a few restaurant owners in the area, mostly, mostly places I frequent, just to be clear about that. This is not scientific and does not qualify as a robust input from the community, but, you know, the concerns were that they're generally, restaurateurs want to be part of the solution. But there are real costs when you start requesting massive infrastructure changes or increased labor. I mean, to clean additional dishes, things like that, slow down service lines, and obviously profit's gonna be a concern, and increased costs will be a concern for retail food operators. But slowing down service is another way to do that, space concerns. But one thing that came up is being careful in how we dissuade carryout containers because we do not wanna promote increased food waste, or people just leaving their food waste at a restaurant rather than being able to take that home. So, I think that, and that, I mean, that, from the waste prevention world and the way things are trending now, that's something we absolutely cannot have happen. So, we gotta find a way to both mix carryout and people be able to bring their home, food home and not be denied if they don't have their own carryout containers. So, upon meeting with DEQ and Lane County and a few other partners, primarily colleagues in other municipalities, we considered a number, while drafting recommendations, a number of items, while drafting recommendations for council. So, as mentioned, there's really a lack of suitable material alternatives for single-use plastic items when you look at the whole lifecycle. And relying solely on reusable carryout items creates difficulties for customers and retailers on a large scale and may potentially promote increased food waste. Some medical conditions and post-operative conditions require use of plastic straws for customers, and it's something you actually see in the other municipalities we had talked about, that they still require restaurants to hold on to some supply of plastic straws for these types of cases. But also, behavior change models may have a broader beneficial impact on solid waste recycling. And that's something we can, we can do both from an ordinance side of things and a regulatory side of things, and also an educational side of things, and I'll talk more about that in both realms. So, what are some educational possibilities? Well, even later in 2018, when I was here talking about our recycling, our current recycling situation, I talked about we're designing a comprehensive educational campaign, utilizes all different types of media, and we're currently working with Lane County to develop a survey to understand better what our messaging should be around such a campaign so we're not wasting time and money sending the wrong messages to people. And also, what would be the best type of behavior change models? And when I say behavior change, I say, I mean nudging people in a direction to be more conscientious consumers and wasters, in a sense, with the benefit of there's always ways to save yourself money by purchasing less, but also understanding more about a lifecycle analysis and what our purchasing decisions mean. And as we're currently constructing our offices, we have opportunities to direct, for direct business engagement around some of these issues. We currently run the Love Food Not Waste, Food Waste Prevention Program. We have over 200 participatory businesses. And we also have the Mayor's Bold Step Award Model, which helps environmentally-friendly business practices be promoted and also promotes those businesses who are meeting those goals. But we can also create ordinances that nudge people into more informed decision-making. Now, earlier today, I had sent an email that had amended some of the original recommendations that were in the AIS. It didn't really, it didn't amend the, I guess, the heart of the issue. It just, we are creating some time considerations to pair with progress we're seeing at the state, behind some, behind some statewide initiatives or bills that are in committee right now. So, Ethan will speak a little bit more to that, and then we'll jump back into some of the meat of the staff recommendations.
Thanks, Michael. So, Michael made the LCA, made it muddier with LCA and then Business Operations, and then I'll just add on the political context. So, there's, there's, as, as to add clarity, as you read in the email, I hope that you had the chance to scan through it, all, all three of these issues are currently, have bills that are being processed through committee right now in Salem. And so, on the House Bill 2509, plastic bag ban, you know, as, as it was proposed, it would be fine for us. It wouldn't have any impact. But then, the amendments that are coming forward would preempt local control. It would move from five cents to 10 cents, and then also, it would add restaurants. So, those are just different things that, if it passes, would impact Eugene. So, we wanted to be mindful of that. In regards to the polystyrene ban, the second item, excuse me, House Bill 2883, that one would set a floor, you know, statewide standard for banning polystyrene for food takeout. And so, that one is broad-based. It's a fairly simple bill, and it's kind of moving through committee, and we're not necessarily sure what the life of that will be. And then last is the single-use service ware, and that one's just, the bills right now are just plastic straws. But because plastic straws would be incorporated within a broader service ware ordinance, then we would wanna be mindful of those. So, I'm here to answer any questions if those come on up.
So, just to talk about the recommendations themselves, so the first one we had was to direct the city manager to draft an amendment to the current bag ban to include single-use carryout bags for retail food businesses. And as Ethan had mentioned, we would advise to wait until seeing how House Bill 2509 comes along in the state legislature, but being prepared, once we have an update or a better understanding of where that is moving, to be able to move on with that. Similarly, the second one is direct the city manager to draft an ordinance banning polystyrene carryout containers. And again, being prepared to move on that, once we have more understanding of how it'll work out with the state. So, waiting for that, but being prepared, once you have a better idea. But the third one was, we have no amendment to directing the city manager to draft an ordinance and schedule a public hearing, requiring retail food businesses to provide single-use service ware and utensils only upon request to, by the customer. And this would include straws, lids, utensils, stirs, and packaged individual-use condiments. That recommendation is more based on the behavior change model I had spoke about, where if it's something where you're asking the customer that they have to be involved with on a regular consumption, like a conscientious consumption-based manner, this might lead to more gains in how they think about their recycling, when they, they might stop the recycling container next time and give an extra thought about what should go in there and what shouldn't. And we feel like these behavior change models have potential for a broader impact. And a public hearing is, be the first time we'd actually be hearing from the community at large around these issues. With that, I'd like to open it up to questions and discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's kind of overwhelming and discouraging, actually. It feels like it's hard to get ahead of this one in a, kind of a rational way. So, I'm very interested in my colleagues and what they have to say. Mike, we'll head it off, and then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was a kid, I'm pretty sure everybody at this table, except maybe one, maybe, is old enough to remember being a younger person, when a can of soda had a pull tab on it that came completely off, and you could find those babies everywhere. I mean, you could find those things everywhere. Jimmy Buffett stepped on one or some, you know, I mean, right? Until they developed a better way to do that, and every man you...
Until they developed a better way to do that and every manufacturer beverages in the world went, yep, we're done doing it that way because this is way better and we don't have those things lying around all over the place. That was an adoption that didn't require legislation. I appreciate all the work defining that there's not, that forcing this issue doesn't create better options is what it sounds like right away. But I will say this, it, it shocks me that so many other states, and there are several, deal with plastic waste, uh, differently than we do in Oregon or better than we, I don't know about the right way to say that. And recyclables specifically is what I'm talking about. In a place where we're known for innovating how we do things like this, I think we should be leading the same kind of thing like the Chamber of Commerce does with angel investing, where people can talk about, um, inventions and ideas and be able to compete for funding to create entire new industries. I think we should be intentionally setting up ways for people to innovate how to deal with waste and how to deal with it in a way that is, doesn't produce as many of the negatives or comes up with a better way to have containers, one-use, single-use containers be created. I mean, I think we ought, instead of forcing people to comply, I think we ought to be on the end of, let's see if we can be the home of the place that comes up with the better option, the one that everybody seems to want to adopt because it makes more sense. It's, it costs less money to everybody involved and it's better for the environment and everything else. I mean, why don't we have a competition to, because I, if there's a place where we could come up with better options, I'm sure it's here. And so I, I'm not the sort that, whose first response is to try and force top-down people to comply with different ways to behave. I'd much rather be a part of coming up with a better option that people naturally want to adopt. So that's my two cents worth.
Alan.
Yeah, thanks for this info. Actually, the, the composting of these materials not always being a good idea actually makes a lot of sense to me. Those, those paper, those cardboard brown bag or cart, containers with the liner in them, when, yeah, I know that Washington was, um, composting those and they ended up having that stuff leach out into the water. And now we're seeing the constituents that are in that particular thing, all in our water supply and in, and, and, and all over the place and it's be, they're becoming what are known as pollutants or contaminants of emerging concern. They're not quite being banned yet, but they're gonna be pretty soon. So actually just taking them and sticking them in a landfill and letting them sit there is actually better than composting them because it doesn't, doesn't impact the environment as much. But, you know, your graphs are really interesting, the DEQ graphs. I, I found them super interesting. The one thing that, uh, is interesting to me is that the choice of materials in terms of consumption-based inventory of greenhouse gases makes a big difference. What you do with it after that is, is a, is a different story, but, um, and, and that was the, one of the major green bars on the bio-based versus non-bio-based, uh, materials. On the particular staff recommendation, if you go back a page, a slide, um, HB 2509, is that basically our, what we do right now? Is it mimic that or is it different?
Counselor Zelenka, it is close. It has many of the-
Without the amendments?
Uh, yeah. It, it's, it's fairly close. What if it passes? The main difference that I just kind of looked at was that, um, the state's standard for, uh, reusable plastic bags says, uh, is a, is a, uh, a thinner, um, gauge than what ours is, uh, what, what ours has in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, otherwise, it's, it's pretty close.
But these amendments potentially preempt any local, would it grandfather us in or is it just preempt everybody from doing it?
Uh, preempts everybody at this point.
And then it would increase it to five cent, or from five cents to 10 cents?
Uh, and, and I think the discussion right now is that nobody, like, the 10-cent amendments are giveaways to, uh, grocers and it's being pushed by grocers, uh, whereas most cities and most legislators are like, yeah, five cents makes some sense, you know? So I think that that's a, one that can be like, you know, secured to say five cents as a, as a top.
Yeah. And, and the reason we have that in there is actually twofold. One was that it is actually more expensive to have a paper bag than it is a plastic bag. Uh, and sometimes even the ones that market choice with the handles are 12 cents versus like one or two cent for a plastic bag. So a regular paper bag is, is, so it was to avoid the cost shift onto the, onto the grocers, but also to put some value on it, like the bottle bill. Having a, just a simple fee like that, even though it's five or 10 cents, makes a huge difference in people's attitudes towards that. In, in this direction, it's, uh, would support including restaurants, which is the, basically this, uh, recommendation number one, but remove the preemption and maintain the five-cent fee. And I could support that. On the polystyrene, so 2883 is just an outright statewide ban on polystyrene containers for food, just food vendors?
Correct.
Used, and that's probably, so that, does that include Starphone cups and the clamshells?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, and then there's a multitude of bills on straws? Is that what I understand?
There's, there's currently three bills. Uh, there's, uh, a House bill and a Senate bill that are companions, so they're roughly the same thing, just working through the different chambers. And then there's a, another House bill, but that one, um, it, I think it's been assigned to committee, but I don't think it's gonna have a hearing. And it's, uh, um, one that would just, uh, apply it to, um, full-service restaurants, so like a walk-in, it wouldn't be for fast food.
And, and is the two bills that have legs, are they on-request-only bills?
Yeah.
So essentially the same recommendation that we have?
Yes.
Okay. So I support all three of these, um, these notions and, um, I guess the question is, wait to see what happens in the legislature or not. We're really only, bills are gonna either die or not within about another month or so, two months at the max. I think in April, if it doesn't go on, move on. It doesn't, it's not gonna go anywhere. So, um, really, we're not talking about months and months and months. We're talking about a couple of months to wait and to see what happens at the legislature. And, and we've done this before, like on the minimum wage, we were poised to take on minimum wage, but the state was working on it. We just said, well, let's see what they do. And then what they did wasn't exactly what, what I had in mind, but it was close enough so we didn't have, spend a lot of staff resources getting us there. So I, I, I think sending a message that we support all of these things, but waiting until we see what happens in the legislature is a good way to go.
Chris?
Thank you. I, I do remember pull tabs and, um, and they were everywhere.
Yeah.
And, and I think the interesting thing is that was a different world and a different time. And I think carrots worked a whole lot better back then. And I think we have moved away from, uh, mostly carrot structure to a lot more stick. Sadly, I wish we didn't have to use the stick as often as we do, but unfortunately, we've reached, I think, a place where we do have to use the stick a little bit more than we might have in the past. A question about, uh, the, the reusables, I noticed that there was a, an aluminum foil container. And if I recall, aluminum foil or, or things made of aluminum are more recyclable than a lot of other things?
In general, um, it becomes difficult making a real broad generalization on foil because it all depends on size and then the ability to be cleaned before recycled, so-
Okay, so it has to be, it has to be cleaned?
Yeah.
Okay. That was, that was really what I was getting at is, you know, that could be the magic solution is we just use aluminum, but apparently that needs to be cleaned as well. Okay. With that, with that in mind, I'm fine with all the recommendations of yours. I think, I think that's, that's great. And I particularly like, um, the recommendations to the IGR manager to coordinate on this stuff. Um, I like trying to deal with the preemption element. I think that's a really important one. Um, and I, I think the work to be done, uh, around 2883 is also good. I think we've done a lot of good work. We want to try to have that recognized and reflected to the degree we can, so I think, I think that's really good. So I, I don't have a problem with any of these and the way they're structured and how we would go forward with them, I think that's absolutely fine. It is a problem and we have to deal with it, so.
Okay. Emily?
Thank you very much. Um, I agree with the mayor. It's kind of disappointing. It's not the magic I wanted, but, um, the information's very important and I appreciate the clear presentation and, and all the research you did, um, that gave me a lot of information I didn't know. So I wish we could be more leading edge instead of waiting to see what the state does right now, but I also don't want to waste, waste our time, so we should, we should wait. I do take, um, a bunch of solace from, from Mike's push for alternatives and I, I think that our hands are kind of tied right now, so I would really encourage us to delve into that. We should talk. The lifecycle analysis really helped me a lot because we do have to consider the environmental costs of the production of the item. So I think it's actually better for the environment to make plastic than, than wood stuff. I didn't really say that. But I, that was interesting and of course, I'm, I'm always concerned about preemption, so thank you for bringing that up. I wonder about getting things on the agenda because it would be a public hearing. I'm thinking it wouldn't be as hard to schedule it sooner because we do those on the third Monday. And so I was hoping to say, yeah, let's do it for April, but it sounds with the legislature, I'd at least like to put a plug in for, uh, let's hope we can do it in May, but that does mean that we need to direct the manager to have the ordinance stuff written and I don't want to waste our time, so I'm a little bit dilemmaed.
You want to speak to that?
Yeah, Counselor Simple. My feeling is that these bills won't be alive until the end. And I, and so I would say, you know, Counselors Zelenka gave estimation of like, it, you know, we'll know in a couple of months of the bills that didn't make it out of committee. Sure, I believe these will, these will keep on living until the end because they've got a lot of, uh, support, but they might not have enough support to be passed. So I would say that if you're, um, if the council intends to, uh, direct, uh, for scheduling a, um, a public hearing, I would say more than likely to be on the safe side, it would be in July would be the, would, because the, the legislative session ends at the end of June. And that way, we'd know for certain where it would be.
And so we'd have to have another work session before then to direct, to have, write the ordinance or no?
No. As I understand it, with the proposals in front of you, it would, um, you would still be moving to, so let's just take the first one. You would still be moving to direct the city manager to draft an amendment to the current ban. And you can say to draft an amendment and schedule a public hearing, but then there, and their further direction would be, the understanding, we'd wait, and then also you'd give direction to the IGR.
And it's the same for the other three. I got it.
The one piece that I would add is that on, um, the single-use service ware, that's the one where the, uh, the way that the bills are being worked right now, uh, I think that if that one does move forward, it would have a, and that's the, um, Senate Bill 90, that one, we could move forward with right now with a public hearing because the, Portland has, has passed their, uh, their single U service, um, ordinance and it's not going to come into effect until, um, July of this year. And so there's a carve-out for municipalities who have, um, adopted and implemented before the legislation, the, the, the bill would come into, um, uh, effect. And so if the city were to put out for public hearing and then the city council determined to pass an ordinance, we would likely be able to get into that grandfather. That would, that would be the lobbying position that I would go forward with and start to work on that in alignment with City of Portland.
I would really like that. That would at least, you know, get us a little to the forefront. So, um, yeah, let's do that. Thank you. Even though I'm still disappointed.
So if, uh, item three passes, our intent would be to bring that back to a public hearing in May.
Okay. Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you. Michael, I love it when you're here. I always learn something new. And it's so great to base your behavior on actual facts than what you wish was true. And I find the more I learn from you, the more I need to stop base, just making consumer choices based on, I can recycle this or it'll compost someday and really change my behaviors. And so I love this idea of a comprehensive campaign and I'm wondering if you have found funding for that yet or if that's something you're going to need in the future.
Um, we have a pretty strong seed funding for it right now and I don't see it being an issue moving forward if we needed more funding to, to budget for that.
And do you have any timeline of when you're hoping to start?
Well, for our residential food waste collection, that'll be rolling out later this spring, early summer. We've created two videos around that that we'll be releasing soon. Um, it's, that was pushed ahead because it's, it's coming this summer. We're working with the county now with a private contractor to do, like I had mentioned, uh, surveys to, Metro did it to the north, um, and they came back with some interesting results about what messaging works and what doesn't in their community, so we're looking to do a similar one down here. So we could then build more of our campaign and messaging off of that.
Fantastic. Thank you. I, I have Mike and Alan in the queue, but I just want to comment on this question of food waste and restaurants and people taking their, that there is a health component here about smaller portion size. Might help sort of avoid the, the issue. All right. With that said, Mike and then Alan.
So it sounds to me like we're gonna have a motion here and Emily, I, I think that falls to you this time here, so, did I understand you to say you were gonna make a motion to move ahead to a public hearing with a ban on utensils? Is that what I heard you say?
No, that's not too, it's too-
Which one was it on the?
Third one.
The third one. It's only on request. So you could bring your own spork or you could say, I need utensils. And you would just be given them, but rather than putting it in your takeout bag, whether you ask for it or not, and it goes in the trash. So you just have to say, yes, I need a fork.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Alan?
So, um, is it okay to have a single motion for all three to make it simple? Something like along the lines of move to direct as recommended by staff with the addition of, um, on the third one, a public hearing in May? Just do it all in one show?
You can certainly do that and if somebody would like to vote no on one of those, they can move to, um-
I think they're all kind of grouped together, so.
Yeah, you can absolutely try that.
Recommend that you-
Thank you.
Do it all at one and with the exemption of May being a public hearing, be a little bit more efficient.
Okay. Take it away, Counselor.
Um, I move to direct the city manager to do these three items listed in our AIS.
With the third one?
The third one being scheduled for May.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on those? All in, you, yep? Comments?
I'm trying to understand what all the three include. Could you be a little more specific?
It's that list. And so just for clarity of the motion, it's, um, there was actually three different ones in the AIS. So the, what you're moving on, but I know what you were looking at and I know what you were pointing to, so just for clarity for the public, it's, the motion is on that.
Right, right. Except for the May part.
And with the addition of May.
It's delay pending the legislative process on the first two pieces, right?
Right, I get that. Let me, I have a question then. So this does a ban if the legislature doesn't. It puts, it, it asks the manager to prepare that?
Or?
If the legislature doesn't do it?
On polystyrene, on polystyrene.
On polystyrene, right? Even though it's worse for the environment?
The polystyrene is different, I think, than like the lined, the lined boxes. Uh, can I have your answer?
Yeah, thank you. Um, we included, um, the carryout, um, retail plastic bags on polystyrene because they are viewed separately from the analysis we put before. Polystyrene is a well-known, uh, human, uh, basically it leaches poisonous chemicals both into the environment and into our bodies and we consume from it. It has become an ocean-born, uh, problem as well.
Yeah, all this didn't include polystyrene. That was just for compostable. It's a different analysis.
Polystyrene is really, really bad.
Yep.
And Portland's had bans since the eighties.
But the effect will be, if we were to ban polystyrene, the effect will be some of the things, and then what I didn't understand was, were you comparing the polystyrene to these? Because we were talking about plastics at the beginning, so I'm just a little bit confused as to the materials we were comparing at the beginning.
Right. Um, so polystyrene may have been, this is a, a review of dozens of different studies that reviewed tens of thousands of different materials, looking at the trend. that reviewed tens of thousands of different materials, looking at the trends. So I can't say polystyrene was or was not included in that huge literature review, but we're moving with polystyrene as a separate issue, understanding that it has both human health impacts as well as environmental impacts.
All right, thank you.
Okay, ready for a vote? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, and none opposed, it passes. Thank you all very much, we're adjourned until 7:30.